My name is Rachel Holt and I'd like to introduce the Prosper ISD Violin Choir. This ensemble is made up of students all across the district. They come from Reynolds and Rogers in Linsong Ranch. They're in grades second through eighth and they rehearse once a week in the evenings. And we've performed in the community this year at the Prosper Christmas Festival and at a Prosper High School baseball game. And we're here tonight to open the board meeting with the Star Spangled Banner.
Well, thank you. That was wonderful, beautiful. Well, we're a little off the agenda, but I do now call to order this meeting of the Prosper Independent School District. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Mr. Davenport, would you lead our invocation?
I would love to. Father, we just thank you for this time. This evening, we get to just stop and show our appreciation for our teachers and honor the Teacher of the Year. And Father, we just are so thankful for our educators and the sacrifice that they make, the selflessness that they give to our students and our parents every single day is just amazing. And Father, we just know that they could go do many other things, but they've decided to commit themselves to education. And every morning, they come in with a great attitude and with a desire to educate our kids and make them better citizens. And Father, we just pray that you continue to watch over them these last few weeks of school. Just give them patience, an extra measure of grace. Lord, as students are looking forward to the end of the year, Father, we just pray for this meeting and we pray for wisdom. It's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Veronica Charice and I'm HR Director right now. We'll be moving to something else. I want to welcome y'all to probably my favorite meeting of the whole year. And this is when we get to honor our Teachers of the Year. And one of the things that I'm so proud to say is that, gosh, every single teacher in our district's amazing, every single one. And those of us who are in central office, who are in administrative positions, I do believe that all of us can say that some of the best times of our lives as educators were when we were in the classroom. And I still believe one of these days, I'm going to end up in the classroom because that's where my heart is. And I know that Teachers of the Year this year, that is where your heart is. And we were fortunate enough to be able to visit the classrooms of these teachers and got to interrupt by taking some pictures and just really talking to kids and watching them just provide all that love, wisdom, support, humor, whatever it is that they do in their classrooms every single day. There's not one day that these teachers dial it in. And I'm so proud to be working alongside them and I know that Dr. Watkins and everyone else here feels the same way. So we are so blessed to have all of you teachers here with us and all of your teams and families, so. Okay, so we've got our Teachers of the Year. So each campus decides on their Teacher of the Year and so we want to honor every single one. Each Teacher of the Year will receive a hundred dollars at the end of the month in their paycheck. Go spend it on some Starbucks. I mean, you could go there like two or three times, depends on what you get. Alright, so I'll switch over here. Dr. Watkins, you can go here and I'll give you the stuff. Okay, our first Teacher of the Year is from Baker Elementary, Jennifer Wattenbarger. This Lori Richmond. From Popple Elementary, Janie Duckweiler. From Hughes, from Bolson Elementary, Jody String. From Hughes Elementary, Lauren Reed. From White Farms Elementary, Gracie Howard. From Rucker Elementary, second year, so she's been named Teacher of the Year for her campus, Jen. From Bradley Elementary, Dushanka Foltz. From Linsong Ranch, Wendy Young. From Reynolds Middle School, Liz Labhart. From Rogers Middle School, Lisa Williams. While they're taking the picture, I have to say, her school picture is as a zombie, so we had to get this one. But I almost did something with a zombie on it. And then from Prosper High School, Ms. Meredith Hamilton. And so this is the hardest part because we wish that every single one of these could be named... Are you okay? That they could be named our district Teachers of the Year for elementary and secondary. And as you can see with the elementary, there's a larger group of... Y'all are all amazing. But we did have to select one elementary and one secondary. And it was really close, and I know I say this every year, but it really is so close because they're all amazing. So without further ado...
Wait, wait. Okay, you're all winners. They had to narrow down to something around this time, but you know, you're all winners. And so this is always odd because their backs are to the screen. They don't even see who's coming up.
Yeah, so do you want to...
Y'all slide up a little bit. That way you'll know who... Turn around that way when you make a face if you didn't get it. That's where it's going to come up.
So our district Teachers of the Year are... Okay, so we have to... We have some gifts for our two Teachers of the Year. And so we wanted to present those first and afterwards we'll take pictures. So our first presenters are Marcellus Rainey and Elizabeth Johnson from the Prosper Education Foundation. They'd like to... This is new this year. They keep upping it up. They're upping it every year. Alright. Are we doing the picture now? No, we're just presenting. Congratulations. On behalf of Prosper Education Foundation, we have a gift of five hundred dollars for each of you. We're a letting...
And also since we all have this one, we also want to thank the teachers that give every month to the scholarship system. We're going to be giving out another month. Again, congratulations to both of you two. Thank you.
Okay, yay, that's one. And then we have Dan Duberside and Greg Dyer would like to present for our...
First of all, thank you so much. At Prosper, I'm Daniel Duberside, the president. The community for the flag program, a lot of y'all, there's fourteen hundred flags that were put out this last year. So I think that's fantastic. A lot of it goes to the kids for going to college. So fifty-one kids last year went to Collin Community College. We paid for that. And there's many other programs we're paying for that help their nonprofit organizations. And congratulations to both of you. You're all winners. Congratulations. A check for five hundred.
That buys a lot of Starbucks.
And then the district does also give you five hundred dollars each at the end of the month. So fifteen hundred dollars. Okay, so here's... I know that all of y'all are looking for somebody right from the past couple of years. Unfortunately, Longo Toyota isn't with us this year. So I know that y'all are really excited to maybe... But they're still going to do it, so. They just couldn't make it. So our Teachers of the Year in December will each get a one-year lease of a Toyota Camry. So do you want to take a break? Yeah. Take like a five-minute break so they can take...
Yeah, we'll go ahead and recess and take pictures. And then for everyone who wants to stay for the fun part of the meeting, welcome to stay. But grab some food before you go out the door and then we'll reconvene the regular meeting after we're done with pictures and everything. So congratulations to this group of very proud...
She's going to have a big chat.
Can you believe her mom?
Did you have your picture taken with your mom yet? Not yet?
I was upset there. I was surprised we didn't possibly... I had to draw a line there. Want some carrots?
Grab the cup already from this.
Don't be to go get it. Don't be to go get it. My picture from Rogers.
Two-minute, two-minute warning. Mine's not working. Hello, hello. Two-minute warning.
Two minutes. It's not working.
Two, two-minute warning, two minutes.
Okay, I think we're about to get ready to go again. Okay. All right, we've had some... What's that? We've had some open forum. People signed up for open forum. I just want to remind the audience for public participation that audience participation at a board meeting is limited to the public comment portion of the meeting designated for that portion, for that purpose, which is where we are now. At all other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered by the board unless requested by the presiding officer. Persons who wish to participate in this portion of the meeting shall sign up with the presiding officer or designate. That's already happened. No presentation shall exceed three minutes. And delegations of more than three persons shall appoint one person to present their views before the board. Remind people that specific factual information or recitation of existing policy may be furnished in response to inquiries. But this is very important. The board shall not deliberate and cannot deliberate or decide regarding any subject or respond really to any subject that's brought before us that is not included on our agenda that's been posted with notice. So although you may make some wonderful comments and have some wonderful and insightful questions, we are unable legally to respond. Does that make sense? Good, good. Okay, let's start off with Zane Beasley.
First of all, I'd like to thank Superintendent, the Board of Trustees, and the citizens here for allowing me the time to speak. As y'all know, my name is Zane Beasley and I am a junior at Prosper High School. I think it's wonderful that we're celebrating the teachers that we appreciate today because it's teachers like the ones that were up here today that have inspired me to come speak. I'm here today to address with you grievances that both I and the student body have felt with the current administration that is above us. There have been perceived repeated actions that have resulted in the neglect and ignorance of bullying, student violence, and abuse within the student body. First, because of the inaction of the administration when it comes to bullying, it sends a clear and direct message to us as students that their priority seems to no longer be on the prospering of students and our safety, but rather the public image of the school. For example, many of us here today have felt bullied, have felt bullying and harassment, addressed it with the school, and felt completely ignored. We feel that our administration is no longer listening. In the most recent example, I'm sure as you know, a student named Chase Tyson fell victim to the lack of action by his administration and possibly his own actions. After witnessing the repeated bullying of a student, Chase attempted to make aware to the school what was happening.
Zane, we need, we really need to not use any names or can we just speak around the issues without identifying...
Yes, sir. I apologize about that.
That's alright.
Yes, sir.
You didn't know.
Yes, sir. When nothing changed, the student attempted to insert himself in the situation to defend the bully, to defend the bullied student. Whether or not the way he chose to do so was appropriate isn't the point, but instead, the blame should be shifted on the administration for the lack of safe, healthy, and the well-being of each and every student. In conclusion, once again, I would like to thank the board for allowing me the time to speak. And I hope this will at the very least start a conversation about how this administration counterintuitively adds to the lack of students feeling safe and secure within the school with the perceived neglect, cover-ups, and bias zero tolerance policies. Thank you. My name is Zane Beasley. And I truly believe that Prosper isn't, but has the absolute capability to be the number one school in the district, the number one school that the administration totes it as, and the number one school district that those teachers up here tonight believe it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Zane.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Okay, next up is Elizabeth Sunderland. Also, please state your address when you come up, Elizabeth, if you don't mind, just for the record.
Hello, thank you. I just want to say thank you so much for giving me this time to speak. I'm Elizabeth Sunderland. I live on fourteen eighty Kingsbridge. I can't remember sometimes. I'm a freshman at Prosper High School and I would like to address to the board that there is a zero tolerance for bullying at Prosper High School. But every day, we see bullying happening. We experience it every day. Until somebody wants to speak up, there's some action, but not always. Even when people do speak up at Prosper High School, it's not addressed or it's put aside. It's as it's not important as other things. There have been multiple cases that we have seen and heard where students have reported the act of bullying and nothing has been done to help those students through those... and nothing has been done to help those students through those times. Prosper has repeatedly stated that they strive to make the school safe and secure for all students, but unfortunately, that one half isn't what we see. For example, a student at Prosper High, their name shall not be stated, has been bullied for quite a while. When they reported the bullying, nothing was done to stop it. Administration just put it to the side, as I've stated before. Students at Prosper High should feel safe. They shouldn't feel scared to be going to school every day, to see the violence that happens at school. We should be safe knowing that we're able to go to school without having to see a fight, without having to go home with bruises and scrapes all over our body from being pushed and pulled and just scared from other students. That's how anxiety has been helping, making our students affect their grades and how it's been lowering our grade averages because of this action that the administration has not been taking. I do believe that Prosper High can and will become the number one school district in Texas if we were able to put more effort into helping our students have a better health and opportunity for this school. I'm Elizabeth Sunderland. Thank you so much for your time to hear me out.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Very nice. Thank you. Okay, next is Cody Hernandez. And we don't need your address after all, Cody, so retract that statement.
Hello, my name is Cody Hernandez, and I'm here to state the, the reasonings why I'm up here is that over the times that I've been in Prosper, which has been all my life, there have been many cover-ups at Prosper High, not just at the new high school, but at the old ones too. And even at that, to say unfortunately, my cousin has been part of one of those cover-ups, although it hasn't been notified to the public, it has been notified to the students. And for an example, a cover-up was a suicide that happened and to one of my closest friends, I shall not name, uh, his name shall not be said. Although it was announced to the public, it wasn't, it wasn't addressed properly. It was covered up in many of the yearbooks to where he wasn't put in it. Or even if he was, he was put at the back, at the back of the seniors. And to that, that's all I have to say, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Cody. I'm sorry for the, that's a terrible loss. Thank you for speaking. And our last is Brooke, is that Hyatt?
Hewitt.
Hewitt, Brooke Hewitt.
Hi, I'm Brooke Hewitt, and I've been a resident of Prosper for only about three years, coming on four. From what I've seen since moving here, I've had my own struggles of history of depression and anxiety and attempts, and while I've, I have personally tried to talk to counselors and I just, I feel by myself that I, that they're not qualified. While they are there for a certain job, we should have somebody there who is qualified in that specific region of mental health. The topic of suicide. I do believe that we do have good teachers here. We have plenty of good teachers. I love all my teachers. There's just the select few that make, that ruin the image, but the school doesn't seem to want to address it, while I do feel like it should be. While I love this school, it's the best school I've ever gone to, honestly. Things do need to be changed. Things need to be addressed. The way suicides need to be addressed. We shouldn't just sweep it under the rug and act like that person never existed. We need to somehow, while you, we don't even have to announce names, families, anything, I just would like some confirmation that this student was here, this student was known, that they're not just being a part of another statistic of Texas averages. So, thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Well, thank you all. We are unable to respond, but I am very grateful for your courage. I can't imagine having the courage to do that when I was your age, so you're to be commended for that. Thank you for participating. Okay. And it's, hey, you guys are welcome to stay the entire time, but it's not rude if you want to go out either, okay? I know it's a school night, so I mean, uh, do what you want to do. Alright. So moving on to the consent agenda. Don't know if you, there you have the minutes there, and, oh mercy. Uh, into the construction updates. This is all Fur Elementary. Stuber. Again, Fur's down, South Stuber's off, Fish Trap. This is Hayes Middle School. The one most near completion.
Did we do lights for the tennis court? Yes, I'm sure we did.
Yes, sir.
I believe.
Yes.
Yes. I know we talked about that once.
Since it's, uh, certainly always going to be zoned with Rock Hill.
Blue, blue, blue.
I know that makes some, uh, old Prosper sort of nauseous, uh, that it's not green, but I, I understand that. Middle School Four, again, this is the project that we're hoping to be able to complete, uh, and, uh, it's on Fish Trap as well, to open in August of 2020, when we also open Rock Hill. And then there's the high school number two. It's getting pretty large over there. And you see how the stadium's coming along. The first home game is August thirtieth, I believe. So it will be ready August twenty ninth. It'll be right before that, but we'll be good to go for the, for the new season.
Just hope we don't have a train on Friday night.
That would be, that would be expected.
Beautiful.
There's the, then you see the nautatorium, which, we have water in that now.
End of the month.
End of the month, we'll have water. Okay. Alright, and then let me and there's, every board member has met their training requirements for the year. That's for public notification of that. And then we go sideways again. And, uh, and then we'll have a student outcomes report with Ms. Gassman for ESL, LoT, bilingual dual, everything, and all the above.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to present on the various language offerings in the Prosper Independent School District. Prosper ISD offers several languages other than English to our students at the secondary level, which includes Spanish, French, ASL, and Latin. With the addition of the new high school coming in 2020, we are also investigating adding a couple more languages, that being German and Mandarin. Our language programs give students the opportunity to earn advanced placement credit. As you can see, Prosper ISD has a strong passing rate with our AP exams in the various languages. Last year, the board graciously approved the Avant Language Test. Assessment through this program, students who are proficient in various languages have the option of earning high school credit, um, one through four years if they pass the Avant Assessment Exam. And this is just a list of the languages that we are able to provide to students that are moving into the district. Our dual-language program begins in the kindergarten level, and this video highlights the opportunity it provides to our students. Hola Ava, como estas?
Bien.
Vamos a comenzar el examen de ciencias. Estamos utilizando las cinco propiedades de los objetos. Dime por favor, como son esos objetos iguales?
Son, son dos círculos.
Son dos círculos, muy bien. ¿Qué más?
Son, son suaves, no, no pesados.
Oh, son ligeros, muy bien. Y como son esos objetos diferentes?
Son, este es chiquito porque es verde y este es rojo, es grande.
Grande. ¿Y cómo es la textura de los objetos?
Es suave.
Suave. Muy bien Ava, muchas gracias. As you can see, she's very good. Her name is-
Did you say that's not a fish?
Exactly. Actually, she, it was very impressive because she was actually using academic language in science. It was a lesson on the properties of something, so she was basically describing the size, the texture, the weight. Um, and she was using the new academic language that she actually learned through a lesson that the teacher provided. At the kindergarten level, uh, science and social studies is taught completely in Spanish. The teacher doesn't speak any English. By October, those kids are basically understanding everything that teacher's saying, just through the, her method of teaching, and they're just sponges at that age. It's, it's very impressive. So if we fast forward, um, a few years, uh, we have Ms. Elizabeth Kirsch. She is from the class of 2018. She was in our dual-language program starting from kindergarten. She is currently attending Baylor, enrolled in a junior-level Spanish class. And although she is undecided as a major, she has just declared her minor as Spanish, which makes my heart proud. Uh, she utilizes her Spanish quite often when she goes on various mission trips with her church. Uh, she's been to Honduras in Spain, um, and she's just loving being able to travel and use the, the language that she's used here, that she's learned here in Prosper ISD, going through our program. And then we also have students like Andre Fiero. Andre enrolled in our pre-K dual-language program as an English learner. Uh, currently, he is in fifth grade, and he actually placed in the Prosper Innovates event. Andre also participates in our Gifted and Talented program. And it's interesting to know that we actually have forty-four students of our kids that are coded as English learners, who are also coded as gifted and talented and receive those services in a district with Ms. Anders and her team. This is the pride and joy of Rucker. They have the Prosper Innovates, and the dual-language students, uh, placed in every grade level. And Austin Yates actually took best overall, and their, their science is taught in Spanish. So during the day when they're learning that content, it's in Spanish. When they did, of course, the project, they did it in English. But this shows academically how strong they're doing. Um, I actually found out about this because a parent was very proud to email me to tell me that all the dual students did really, really well, and they placed very well. And here are just some more wonderful pictures of parents. Um, when I asked for permission to use their names in the presentation, they sent pictures as well, so I wanted to recognize them, so you can put faces with names. And then as we look towards our Prosper High School National Honor Society induction that just happened, all those students in that group picture are actually dual-language kids that stuck through, through Spanish four. The students enroll in kindergarten with the intent that hopefully they go through Spanish four, but of course, it is student choice. We don't make them stay in there, you know, perhaps they find a different passion when they get to high school, the arts, some type of arts, and they can exit the program. However, um, when we saw the number of kids that are still continuing with the language through, you know, fourth year, it's really impressive, and they're also getting, uh, college credit if they, they pass that AP exam. And in closing, the language programs we offer, whether it be ESL, dual-language LoT, prepare our students for their futures beyond Prosper ISD. Questions? Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Okay, that wraps up the consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
Alright.
Thank you, Deborah and Mays. Very good. Oh yeah, we got to vote. Feels like I haven't been here in a while.
All in favor? Thank you. Approved. Thank you, Mays.
I did have to say that I had, uh, some friends whose daughter went through the program, and, uh, she went to college and clipped out of all her Spanish, and so they were thrilled, so congratulations on all the achievements.
Mr. Gray.
Tonight, we're going to be looking at for some charts from as of March thirty-first of the school year. Uh, the first graph shows our investments by banks, and we have them in TechSpools and Lone Star, and Independent is our current depository contract, and Legacy as well as Farmers Bank here in Prosper. Just want to let you, uh, show you what the, the comparisons of the investments have been versus a year ago. But also, I, I don't have it on this graph, but I'd like to tell you what the, some of the rates are. Uh, currently, the average, uh, excuse me. My, um, someone's calling me. My ba, my battery's going off. Never done that before, I'm sorry. The average, uh, rate is about two point two five among all these institutions. A year ago, the average was one point four. So you can see we've always, we, within twelve months, we've increased almost a hundred basis points in the last year. This, uh, chart here shows nothing's working. Okay, uh, by funds, and this is your general operating fund, your debt service, your bond funds. And you can see where we were a year ago from that. As you can see, we have a total of funds of two hundred and nine million dollars, uh, this year compared to two hundred and one. But the big difference is where we should be putting our emphasis on is a, is a general fund, a hundred and thirty-eight million versus a hundred and seventeen from last year, as well as our debt service, twenty-three point nine last year, and we're over thirty million this year. Revenue, this revenue section shows you where we are as of March thirty-first compared to last year. We have collected, uh, over a hundred and thirteen million dollars this year compared to ninety-six million last year. And ninety percent of that, or over ninety percent of that is local tax collections increases. This, uh, shows you the total revenue, uh, that's budget comparison. Uh, we have a revenue budget of a hundred and thirty-six million for this year. We've already collected a hundred and thirteen, and we're at, um, actually, uh, it's over ninety percent as we speak, uh, as of March, and we're just up by two basis points above what we were last year at this time. This sho, uh, shows you the current tax collection, current tax collections, uh, compared to last year. And in this graph, you can see it looks like a mountain. Of course, December is your highest month, and the, the months, you know, like in September going upward, from January going downward. As you can see, we're, we're still way above where we were a year ago in comparison. And to this day, we have actually collected over a hundred percent of our levy from, uh, for the current taxes, and most of that is due to this next, uh, reason for the over percent is due to the ag rollback. And we've collected over a million dollars this year in ag rollback, and we will continue to doing that as lo, as long as our growth continues to stabilize and sustain it. Uh, again, though, last year, we did collect almost a one point four million at this time last year in ag rollback. This slide here, where we're talking about operating expenses, as you can see, the, uh, total expenses to date is over seventy-four million dollars. A year ago is fifty-eight, a very whopping twenty-two percent increase. As you can see in the very first column, the biggest increase is payroll. As you've noticed, uh, we've made several, uh, additions as well as, uh, increases of payroll li, from last year. If you compare the sixty-five million to fifty million, that's over a thirty percent increase in one year. This shows you the types of expenses by object code or by purpose, but you can see that, uh, most of the pie is similar to last year's pies, slices. As you can see, the biggest piece is the payroll. And, um, please notice that the, this year, the payroll is eighty-seven point nine percent of the total expenses. Uh, last year was eighty-five point nine. There's no, uh, there's no, um, need for cautious here because if you look down here in two seventeen, two thousand and eighteen, we had a capital expenditure represented over two point four percent. We have not made that capital expenditure this year. We will be, uh, asking for your approval. We have not made that capital expenditure this year. We will be, uh, asking for your approval later tonight, but that represents a point three percent. So that's about a two percent, uh, change, and that's where that payroll would be down to eighty-five where it should be. And this next graph shows the expenditures by functions. As you can see, we have, uh, expended almost as, just one percent more than we were la- this time last year. We have spent fifty-nine percent of our total budget. Last year it's fifty-eight. As you can see, the, the bottom line, uh, the instructional part is right on target. The two others that, right above that is the leadership and instructional support. There's an increase in that, and that's mainly due to, uh, transportation as well as activities in the, uh, athletics as well as fine arts. And the leadership is the additional, um, classroom leaderships like the principals and the assistant principals. But other than that, everything looks right on target. This fund, uh, the food service fund shows you this graph where we were, uh, comparison from last year. The, uh, the notation over there, we've increased two hundred and thirty-three thousand, uh, in cash flow this year, a little less than we were again this, where, where we were last year. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that for the next few months. Debt service, we made our first payment in February. We'll make the, the last payment in August. You can see the, uh, increase in net flow from prior year. Twenty million versus almost seventeen million. And then our athletic fund is a, a right on target. Um, it's basically the same as it was last year. And then this shows you the, uh, total payments by month by bond payments. As you can see, we have spent almost a hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the two hun- a hundred and eighty, a hundred and seventy-nine million of the two hundred million that was, uh, received last fe- last March. And by the way, our bond sale that we just had, we'll get our money on Wednesday, the, the last of the two hundred million dollars.
Just to, just to clarify, that's construction payments with bond money.
Yes, I'm sorry, construction payment. This shows you the, the monthly, but we have, uh, twenty million left after, after, as of March thirty first. And then we'll get the two hundred million to finish all the current projects we have now. And speaking of projects, I'm just gonna give you a real quick view. Here's middle school, May- Hayes Middle School. Uh, eighty-eight percent complete base as of March thirty first. Uh, high school, uh, is eighteen percent completed, and the stadium, uh, thirty percent balance left. And the, this is based upon poll contract amount. Nothing has to do with all the total amount of the project itself. Elementary ten, Fur Elementary, right on target along with Stuber. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Rusty. Okay, we have an action item to approve the financial investment tax report for March twenty nineteen. Is a motion required?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Jana, second?
I'll second.
Second, all right. Bill, all in favor? All right, passed. Budget amendments?
The food service contract, Dr. Bradley. Uh, every year about this time, we need to, uh, approve the food service contract and, uh, or that, report that to the Texas Department of Agriculture. And so, as you know, for the last couple of years, we've used, uh, SFE, and, uh, they have provided a, a contract for us to, uh, re-up for one more year. And so our recommendation, uh, is tonight that you would approve that contract. Um, I do have, uh, Chris Maggert here, along with, uh, his team at the back. Um, if you have any particular questions about that, I'll attempt to answer them or, or certainly defer to Chris if needed. Uh, but, uh, uh, we are asking that you, uh, to recommend, uh, SFE to, uh, provide our food service, uh, for this, uh, upcoming school year.
Any questions for that? We have a report in the.
Do we get any feedback from parents or kids or anything like that? Is there a place where that's?
So they, they, they do their own surveys, uh, that they do provide, uh, uh, to me occasionally, and so they survey students and then parents have the opportunity. Uh, by and large, the feedback that we've received has been positive. Uh, I think the, uh, food trailer is finally in, uh, uh, operational, and so that's been a big hit at PHS. Uh, and so we've seen, I think it was about two hundred kids a day, uh, utilizing the, uh, food trailer, and so that provided another option for our PHS, uh, students, which we know that they need more options as there continue to be more of them. And, uh, um, but we're excited about that because it's gonna provide us opportunity to use that stadium, naditorium, events like Steam Night, and so that has been, that has been positive. Um, so overall, yes, it's been good.
Any questions?
Do you have any new concepts for, for next year, for the high school and middle school or anything? Do you have any new concepts for next year?
Yeah, we're actually, because of the, sorry, because of the addition of the trailer, it's actually taken away all the lines on the inside of the, of the high school. So we're actually converting that into a, a different concept for next year. So that's go, and then just with the, just to work with the, with the district.
They will, uh, as a note, they will be, um, obviously taking over for Hayes Middle School and then Fur and Stuber. They will also be assisting us, uh, with the concessions at the stadium, because that's obviously a much larger thing than what it has been. Uh, and so, uh, SFE is going to be playing a role in procuring that, and we're gonna operate it, um, much more like you would at Toyota, uh, complex in Frisco, where booster clubs will work it, but they will no longer be in charge of procuring the items, going to Sam's, loading their own car, bringing it back, yes. So I think that will be a benefit, um, to our booster clubs.
Any more questions?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract for SFE in the near.
Mary Lou. Second for Jana. All in favor? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Bradley.
This is, uh, to replace outdated equipment. Projectors and permethium boards no longer supported. You can see how it's broken down there for rock bottom price of the one point four five rock bottom.
That time, that's the, that's the item I think Mr. Craig was referencing, uh, in his presentation.
So how are these boards different? Are there any new technology or?
He's, he's coming around, he's coming.
He's coming around.
Maybe.
They're units that the students can actually see. It's, it's the best start, it's the best point I can give you. The, the units that we have, they were implemented two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, when we opened Rogers. Um, as you can see in the picture, the one on the left is the, is the same classroom, um, with the lights on or with the lights off. Um, that's Baker, One Room Sample, that's Folsom Elementary, that's Rucker, I cannot even tell the colors. And that's Rogers Middle School. We have squeezed the life out of those units. It's time to, to retire them, put them to dumpster.
A lot of years.
Yes, actually, we ha- we have, we have been able to, to get good use of them, but we need something that the students can see. Can see without a screen in their eyes, without being in the dark. Um, units that if I put them with a motorized mount, a child on a wheelchair can approach and touch the screen. Um, that, that's, that's what we're trying to get. They are, um, energy-saving devices. They barely produce noise as opposed to the projectors. So if you're under, if you're a student sitting under a projector, right now you hear a buzzing noise from the projector. Those units, they don't, they don't make any noise. And they are bright. I can be twenty feet away, twenty-two feet, which is the farthest distance in our classrooms, and still I can read. I can see without, what's that? And it's also with any, any angle, because the, the, the kid may not be straight. It can be to the side, right? I can still see it without glare. I can have the lights on and still see something. So that's the idea. We have many schools to be retrofitted. These are the first, four first ones to get, to get done.
Do they still operate the same? And I'm asking that just from like training, you know, teacher training.
Actually.
Do they, because we've done a lot, I mean, I know over the years, we do a lot of training in teachers, and is there going to be new training that's needed with the new boards, or is it the same, just a new, newer version of the board?
So there is no training when you connect your device. Your device will recognize the screen. You will not have to calibrate. You will not have to do anything. And as we get the teachers more mobile and they may go from room to room, they connect their laptop, move on. They don't have to do anything. The screen will recognize, and you can touch the screen and, and do. Now, there is training to be involved. Because we really wanna get all of it, every single thing out of those units. You can have a PowerPoint and annotate. You can save that document. You can share it. You can put it onto your Google Drive. You can do many things. So the training is already, we're already arranging for that training. So this summer we can start disseminating that training and get good things out of these devices.
Thank you.
Great. Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mays makes a motion to approve. We have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you there. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. As you can see.
Uh, here we have the, uh, adoption of materials of K, uh, E L R, Spanish, uh, Language Arts and Handwriting. Sort of a formality. Uh, this comes out of IMA funds, uh, that we get from the state. Let me see what that is. But we need to, uh, still secure board approval. If you can see that, more power to you.
Cursive logic.
So, yeah, so is cursive in cursive?
It's back in.
Cause my nineteen-year-old still can't read cursive because we're addicted, but it wouldn't, she was here.
Can't write, you'll read it.
Yeah, so I think that's important.
Okay. All right, that's a action item requiring a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Deborah, thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jana. All in favor? I think it was Deborah and Jana, right?
This next item is for you to consider authorizing district personnel. We, we go between CSP and CM at risk. Instead of, uh, uh, trying to get it each time to have the schedule for individual board approval to authorize or give the leeway to camp, campus, district administration, uh, to evaluate that and make those decisions on CSPs or CM at risk. Uh, evaluate that so we can pounce. Uh, given the velocity, we, we need to, uh, are asking for that, that kind of authority to forge ahead. Along with the criteria you've already established for CSP and for CM at risk. If that ever changes, that'll go back to the board to change any of the, uh, any of the selection criteria or evaluation criteria for any of those projects.
Have other districts delegated that this is a delegation of responsibility, right? Is that, has that happened elsewhere, you know of?
Uh, yes, sir, I don't know. Uh, I mean, every district's different on that. I mean, some, uh, usually fast-growth districts, uh, that are moving at mock speed, those are the ones that are, uh, doing stuff like this, uh, for administration. As you know, I mean, uh, you will be provided always the evaluation and why we're choosing this one. See it, we predominantly use CM at risk because of the timing of projects, uh, what it allows, and Mr. Brown, I don't know where you are, Josh, he's in the back. Uh, just to refresh your memory, that allows you to get everybody in play, the, the, the construction manager and the architect together on the front end to, to, to work on the design instead of them doing all this on the front end.
They're handing it off.
Then they come in, that's, the, the contractor comes in after the CSP. Now, sometimes if we feel the market is favorable, like we did in the last two elementaries, uh, and we have the time, we're in a good window for that, uh, uh, then we'll, we'll go the CSP route. One thing that'll be coming to you, uh, in the near term is, uh, authorizing some, uh, additional future projects, uh, to the architects so they can always be a step ahead. Like, they, they should already be in full design mode for high school three. Uh, and if we're already, if we're already in choosing a CM at, then we already got the team together for that to go forward. Uh, uh, so we'll be bringing that information, uh, to you, uh, uh, at, at a future meeting in terms of, uh, what are projects to assign the architect. Uh, again, so we can set, we, we need to always be looking at ways, to the extent we have control, to stay ahead of the projects. Uh, and be planning on those, because most of these projects are requiring eighteen to twenty-four month lead times, uh, before anything happens. Uh, and a lot of people don't connect those dots that way. They just know when the school opens.
Okay.
Uh, so we actually have to have that kind of lead time before we're turning dirt on these bigger projects. So it is a, a, a pretty big family.
Any questions on that?
But that said, if, if, if y'all aren't com- if y'all aren't comfortable with that, then we will forge ahead the way we've been doing it. Still be good to go.
So you have the option.
Yeah, between, these are the two we, we, we go between, right, uh, on that.
Okay. Consider action on approval, requires a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Bill. Second?
I'll second.
All right, Mary Lou. All in favor? Okay. We're gone? Okay, I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into executive.
Jana, Mays, all in favor? We're stepping into executive session. We're gonna do our executive session stuff and then come back and deliberate in public. If you wanna stick around for that, you're welcome to. Otherwise, we will, uh, thank you for being here.